Good evening and Happy New Year, everyone. Welcome to our Business Board meeting. It is Thursday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
To the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
The board met in executive session this evening to review the personnel report, assessment appeals, and several confidential student placement and settlement agreements, and update on the C E S P negotiations, and an employee grievance was also discussed. The meeting lasted approximately an hour. And now, I would like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented in three B through three D. May I have a second? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve financial reports as presented in items four B through four M for November twenty twenty-four and December twenty twenty-four. May I have a second, please? Jeremy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve the treasurer's report on November twenty twenty-four and December twenty twenty-four's treasurer's report. May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now, is there any public comment on any items on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Krishnan.
Thank you. Item seven, seven B and seven C, motion to approve the personnel report, extracurricular contracts as outlined in seven A and seven C, board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes, appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer to subjects of presentation of valid credentials, employment verification documentation, and state mandated requirements.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Item D, January School Board Directors' Recognition. Not many people know that our elected officials sitting in front of you are not paid. They are volunteer elected officials. So, therefore, I'd like to read the following proclamation. Whereas the role of the locally elected school officials has served the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and local communities in meeting the needs of public education since the passage of the Free School Act of eighteen thirty-four, and whereas these local boards have discharged their responsibilities to public education in the matter which has placed public education at the forefront of our educational system, and whereas locally elected officials have distinguished themselves and their communities in this non-paid volunteer public service commitment, and whereas the contributions of these men and women should be recognized and appreciated by those who benefit from the workings of our public school system, now therefore be a resolve that the board of school directors and the Pennsylvania School Board Association hereby proclaims the month of January as school director recognition month of this Commonwealth, and further resolve that this proclamation be communicated to all school districts, school officials, and local communities in the plan program which brings visibility and awareness of the role of locally elected officials to the citizenry of the Commonwealth. I personally want to thank all the school directors for their dedication, not only to the faculty and staff of the Colonial School District, but absolutely to our students and all of our residents in providing quality educational opportunities in a physically responsible environment, not just this past year, but for salaries. And as is our tradition, I'll be sending out to the board some different types of items with Plymouth White Marsh swag for you to pick from, so that you can continue to show our school colors and support our schools as you attend our plays, our musicals, our concerts, our sporting events, and I thank you for your selfless commitment to this school district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, annually, the board of school directors adopts the Principles of Governance and Leadership Resolution from PSBA. As much as I know you all love to hear me read multiple paragraphs through the community, I'm going to emphasize that essentially, the principles of leadership for school board members means that we'll advocate earnestly, lead responsibly, govern effectively, plan thoughtfully, evaluate continuously, communicate clearly, and act ethically. And I can assure you that nine school members, school board members and school board members do that on a daily basis to support our students, our faculty, and our staff. And, but it's always a good thing to make sure of reaffirm.
Great, thank you so much. And now, our student representatives. Well, that is a move?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
To adopt the principles.
Oh, all right, so that was a motion to adopt the principles. May I have a second? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you. Now, round the answer to you.
Can everyone hear me all right with this microphone? Okay. Unfortunately, Fort Washington's a bit icy right now, so maybe it, our Tricky Rapid Area is a little under the weather, so it's gonna be all me today, but let's get started. Also, since we didn't give the update in December, it's gonna be longer than usual just to disclose. So, our monthly student board report starts with P W. The students and staff of P W H S joined forces to donate to the Colonial Neighborhood Council for the holidays. Canned food and toiletries were donated and delivered prior to the holiday. The music department and student musicians perform for families on the first day of December twelfth for our annual winter concert. P W gives a special thanks to Mrs. Kaufman, Mr. Connor, and Mr. Cooper for leading an exemplary program. Congratulations to all of the performing performers for a now standing job. P W cheerleaders, congratulations to the P W High School cheerleaders on qualifying for the P I double A state championships in Redding. The team placed second in the three A large divisions of districts. On December eleventh, P W H S welcomes back Beth Burdowski, P W class of eighty-four, president of the Irish Community Group, to host the annual Careers in Art Night. Careers in Art at P W is organized by Mrs. Candy Madge and Callow, which began in twenty nineteen, as a program to bring visual arts students and their parents together to connect with a panel of professionals in the fields of art and design. The evening provided students and parents opportunities to visualize art and design pathways, whether conventional or unconventional, through the eyes of professionals who made the dream of working in the art and design field a successful reality. Twenty-six students made it to the Future Business Leaders of America State Competition with five first-place finishes. P W says great job at P L A. And finally, for P W, their second semester will begin on January twenty-seventh after finals next week. Moving on to C M S. On Wednesday, December eighteenth, C M S was proud and hosted Gold Card Senior Citizen Winter Concert. Over four hundred guests joined them during their regular school day to enjoy breakfast together before enjoying an incredible performance from the C M S and P W H S band. C M S says thank you to the Food Services and Facilities Department for all of their support. The Brain Show, their activity, was held on twelve, December twentieth last year. Students had a ton of fun celebrating and even appeared before the growing winter weather. On Friday, December thirteenth, the C M S Student Council hosted a fantastic winter dance for the sixth grade class with over two hundred and fifty students participating. Thanks to student council leaders for coordinating such an awesome event. On Thursday, November fourteenth, C M S Movie Night was a huge success, with the theme centered on sustainability and helping others. Students who attended the showing of Wally not only enjoyed a fantastic film, but also learned valuable lessons about conservation and community support. The student council led a camp food drive, camp food drive, collecting over a hundred dollars to donate to the Colonial Neighborhood Council in Kachi. The C M S Club members performed their first annual holiday showcase on December ninth. Club members, a group of seventy-seven and eighth graders who loved to sing, presenting music representing multiple holidays, they entertained and packed the audience and got everyone into the holiday spirit. C M S Band and Orchestra performed their winter instrumental on December seventeenth. Their students put on an incredible performance with the guidance of Mr. O'Neill and Mrs. Darrells. Many of these students will be onstage again on January twenty-third with the Monaco Band performance hosted at C M S. C M S is very much looking forward to an incredible choral extravaganza at C M S on January twenty-eighth at seven P M. This special event will reflect the combined talents of both C M S and P W students sitting together. C M S Girls' Basketball competed another competitive season for Winter Bridge with both seventh and eighth grade qualifying playoffs. C M S's wrestling and boys' basketball seasons are both off to a great start, and they're looking forward to hosting the M C double A Wrestling Tournament planned this season. And lastly, for C M S, thanks, Mr. Kaplan, for all his news. On several occasions this month, C M S graduate students visited P W to participate in a crew taught class with high school students. Later this month, on January twenty-ninth, eighteen, C M S orchestra students will participate in a P M E A Elementary and Middle School String Fest. The day will end with a festival concert at six thirty P M at Souton area high school. For C E S, during the last week of November, the school held parent teacher conferences, which the school says were very well attended. C E S also held the No Place for Hate Assembly and Family Visitation, which began well very well attended. In December, C E S had their advanced winter concert, which was a great way to kick off the holiday season. C E S Cares raised two thousand six hundred dollars, enabling the students to buy holiday gifts for many children in the community. Finally, for C M S, or C E S, they welcomed a new art teacher, Taylor Curmer, who comes from Featherstone Elementary School in Woodbridge, Virginia. Also, Francis, excuse me for this pronunciation, Junon, joined C E S's security guard staff coming from the Abington Police Department. Onto Plymouth Elementary. On Friday, December twentieth, twenty twenty-four, Plymouth Elementary students participated in the school's annual Chalk pajama day of honor. Families were able to make the donation to Chalk, and all students were invited to wear their pajamas to show their support. This year, Plymouth Elementary raised one thousand five hundred dollars to support the families of Chalk. The school says thank you to all of the P U families. On December thirteenth, the third grade concert, third grade chorus, sorry, under the direction of Mrs. Tracy O'Shea, performed their winter concert. Families were invited to attend the concert and watched the students perform a variety of different winter songs. Mrs. O'Shea and the chorus worked very hard to prepare, and it definitely paid off. Plymouth Elementary says it was a fantastic performance. The Ridge Park, the Ridge Park T T O is hosting their annual spaghetti dinner on Wednesday, January twenty-second. Ridge Park also recently completed their first No Place for Hate activity this year. It was called One Book, One School, and it involved every class reading a book, Say Something by Peter Reynolds. Students created self-portraits that were displayed around the school. Mrs. Sharke, school counselor, continues to reach classes each month. She focuses on the school's character traits of the month. And lastly, for Ridge Park, during the week of December sixteenth, kindergarten students traveled around the world to learn about different holidays. They rotated classrooms and completed relevant activities. All students had a passport with its stamps and soups. Very adorable. Concha Hocken Elementary. On January third, the C E students enjoyed a school-wide hip-hop assembly with DJ Reggie that focused on character education. C E was also revved up on January second, and it ended up with a five thousand dollar grant from Morgan Stanley Foundation that will be directed through the C S D E F. This grant will go towards an Actors Club Sports Club at C E. Exciting. Starting January fifteenth, the Concha Hocken Electric Force and Live Direct Step Team will be teaching step dancing to students at the cafeteria from six fifteen to seven thirty P M at C E. This is a free program, which students will learn to step dance and engage with children's literature from black authors. The program will run until the end of March. And finally, for Concha Hocken, C E will kick off the Great Kindness Challenge on Monday, January twenty-seventh at eight fifty A M at the annual kindness tunnel assembly. All school board members and administrators will hopefully join them. C E will also complete its second No Place for Hate project during this week that's connected to their One Book, One School initiative by spring kindness to other K through three students with travel eighty bucks. And lastly, not least, we have the White Marsh Initiative, which just won an announcement. The third graders recently celebrated National Word Day by choosing a word that was new or unfamiliar. They were encouraged to represent a word with their clothing or with added extras like props. The students paraded around the school to show off their words, and they also had the opportunity to look at all the words in the different third grade classes. This was a tremendous success, and White Marsh is already looking forward to next year's National Word Day. This concludes the student board report. Thank you all for listening.
Old point, I've been you when you were at Ridge Park, I think, and now that you're senior. And I hate to put you on the spot, but I know you've excelled in many different areas of my school. How is the college church going, and do you have any updates?
So, I'm super excited to get into the University of Chicago, so that's all we've done.
Thank you, thank you. Congratulations, that's outstanding.
Thank you, Doctor.
I know, it's hard to call it here.
I have a preparation for that.
It's cold there.
Yeah.
That's fantastic, congratulations.
Congratulations, Ron.
Very happy for it, well deserved.
All right, now we will move on to new business. Rick?
With the close of the twenty-three twenty-four fiscal year and the acceptance of the owner report in November, the district's unassigned fund balance totals go in nine hundred eighty thousand two hundred dollars, which is approximately eight point two one percent of the annual twenty-four twenty-five budget. The administration is recommending this transfer to comply with the state's unassigned fund balance limit of eight percent. So, the motion is to approve the transfer of three thousand, three hundred twenty-six thousand twenty-five dollars from the general fund unassigned to the general fund assigned fund.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the administration's regulations to compensate Donovan Kupu, the tax collector for the borough of Concha Hocken, six thousand six hundred dollars per year, effective July first, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine. This is an increase of one hundred dollars per year.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Rick?
So, the motion to approve the stipulations to settle the assessment appeals of the properties listed in the address.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to appoint Chris Epstein and William Winchester as Colonial School District's representatives to the Central Monaco Technical High School's Joint Operating Committee for a three-year term. The Joint Operating Committee consists of three members appointed from each of the three participating districts, Colonial, Norristown Area, and Upper Marion Area School Districts. May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? All right, congratulations to Chris and Will. Rashida?
Educational Service Contract. The next is school tuition for two students at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand sixty-five dollars per student. Then the one services Crestwood Education Center, tuition for one student at fifty-two thousand six hundred fourteen dollars twenty-one cents. One-to-one services for one student at thirty-one thousand one hundred eighty dollars fifty cents. And lastly, the Overgrowth School, one-to-one services for two students at two hundred fifty-five dollars per student per day.
Thank you. May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Great.
Compensatory education settlement and release agreement. Due to student confidentiality, this agreement was reviewed in the executive session prior to this meeting.
May I have a second to this motion? Gail? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Release and placement agreements. Due to student confidentiality, these two release and placement agreements were discussed in executive session.
May I have a second to this motion, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Solve, solvent and release agreement. This is a motion to approve a settlement and release agreement, and due to the student's confidentiality, this agreement was discussed in executive session.
May I have a second, please? Jeremy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Gail?
Board policy, this is a motion to approve the board policies outlined below on a secondary basis, policy number two thirty-five, student rights and responsibilities, policy number eight fifteen, self-reliance of internet computers and network resources, and policy eight fifteen dollar one, use of generative artificial intelligence in education.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Gail?
The twenty-five twenty-six academic calendar of the Colonial School District of Directors set the start date for the twenty-five twenty-six school year at the September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four board meeting. Board approval was requested for the K to twelve calendar for the twenty-five twenty-six school year as presented.
May I have a second, please? Sharon? Any questions or comments?
See, I would just highlight that the start date was previously approved for August nineteenth, and the last date is still October twenty-fifth.
October twenty-fifth.
October twenty-fifth. Sorry, teach.
Yes. August twenty. That, yes, that's, that's, that's clear. Twenty-five. Yes.
Um, that is.
He's got me about seventeen foot.
All in favor? Great, thank you. Sharon?
We just wanted to make sure everyone was listening. All right. This is a motion to approve the Plymouth White Marsh High School Program of Studies for the twenty-five twenty-six school year as presented.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the start of evening school classes and instructors. Motion to approve instructors in classes for the Plymouth White Marsh High School, adult evening school, winter and spring, two thousand twenty-five sessions, as outlined in that attachment of Jessica Lester, dated January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
May I have a second, please? Gail? Any questions or comments?
I'm just gonna choose so it's easy.
All in favor? Sharon?
This is a motion to approve the conference requests outlined below. These requests were reviewed at the January thirteenth curriculum committee meeting. P W replaced school college counselor Beth Lynch to attend George Mason University's line in Washington, D.C. from March twenty-fourth through the twenty-fifth. There is no cost of admission for this conference and official conference for Beth Lynch and Deputy and Advancement Officer Dr. Figaro Douglas to visit Clark Atlanta University, Warhouse College, and Spelling College from February seventeenth through nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
May I have a second, please? Jeremy? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Now, on to solicitors' report.
We have communicated with our school client base about the impact of a recent Kentucky court decision that invalidated the twenty-twenty-four Title IX Regulations of the Biden Administration, which will require certain districts to roll back their current Title IX Regulations to twenty-twenty. So, that's going to be a process that I'm sure your district is going to go through. And in addition, as we know, a new administration is going to be taking control of the federal government shortly, and we are expecting some significant changes in a number of different areas that may be accomplished through executive orders, so we're going to have to watch that very carefully. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you for that update. Now, we'll move on to community reports. C R S L, safety and wellness, I believe there is no report this evening. Curriculum and programming?
Sure, so the curriculum committee of the board met on Monday, January thirteenth, which included reports from both Plymouth White Marsh High School and Colonial Middle School. We reviewed annual achievements, growth, and areas of focus from each school's improvement plan. We're highlighting, and we just want to say thank you to our administrators, our principals, our curriculum team for bringing all of this to us. If you're interested, you can go back and look at the audio from the curriculum meeting. If you'd like to hear a little bit more about how those two schools were performing. And then, Mr. Ms. Kirk, I just was trying to share our preview of the program of studies, which we just approved, and then we also discussed the conference request again, which we just approved. And I just want to note that the next curriculum committee of the board meeting is February tenth, where the elementary schools will have an opportunity to share their data. So, if you're interested, we would love to see you.
Great. Facilities? Will?
Yes, our last meeting was inclement weather, so we weren't able to attend, but Mr. Lawley has been keeping us updated on the budget and the timing and everything, and we are up to date. I pass by every day, and it's looking better and better. So, are we expecting new pictures?
Finance, Rick?
The finance committee met on Monday, January thirteenth. The committee discussed the fund balance transfer and tax collector compensation voted on this evening. Currently also reviewed the twenty-four twenty-five budget, took a first look at the twenty-five twenty-six budget. The twenty-four twenty-five budget has seen a decrease in interest revenue but an increase in transfer tax revenue. Also notable, the Chromebook Insurance Program has been successful in decreasing the cost of Chromebook repairs. Thank you to all the families who have participated, and the students who are taking better care of their visits.
Great, thank you. H R, Gail?
To whether we did not have our meeting at this moment, so we will have a meeting next month.
Great, thank you so much. Central Monaco Technical High School, I believe there is no report this evening. Can I move to the unit? Anything, Mark?
No December meeting.
Uh, anyone can read the reports.
Yes, Plymouth Township will have a Black History Event on February fourth, second, from ten A M to twelve. It's been a really good event for the last three or four years, so if you have the time, I am really encouraged to come on.
Thank you, Gail, for the foundation.
Yes, so we, our annual campaign that was held at the end of the twenty-twenty-four, we superseded the goals, and we plugged the twenty-one thousand three hundred eighty-six dollars with a hundred and seventy-five donors participating. Through that, so far, we purchased two thousand dollars in weekends and market certificates to be the theme of our food table to use for this school year. Our philanthropy campaign will start at the end of January and go through the end of February. The schools, school clubs are participating to assist with the philanthropy campaign, high skills classes at P W and C M S help write cards out, and the ambassador club at C E S will be helping with writing out and remembering at C E S. Our five K event, well, we have begun planning for that, is scheduled for Sunday, April sixth. We are currently looking for sponsors for that event, and as well as recognizing sponsors from our foundation day as well. Senior awards, we secured eight donors for individual awards for graduating seniors, which are currently being advertised by the college counselor at P W. And then, lastly, grants, we approved a grant for P E in December for the guidance department, and we are seeking grants to secure our food program and working curriculum to secure other grant dollars in the sense of.
Attached to tonight's agenda, for your information, are the athletic activity accounts, activity accounts both at C M S and P W, building reports, curriculum report, technology report. And now, is there any public comment this evening? Is there any further board comments this evening?
Could we just remind everyone around M O K Day what the timing is for that, her day of service?
It starts at ten thirty, and the first session goes until eleven thirty, second is twelve fifteen to one forty-five.
And thirty to twelve, and then twelve fifteen. Yeah, so M O K Day of Service at the high school, so we'd love to see you come out for your notice, for your family. Thank you, Jess, for the information.
And, Mr. Murray, thank you for bringing that up, and she would never ask for any accolades, but Jess is very honorable. Jess has taken this idea and grown it from a small opportunity into a larger, great opportunity, and has very well received our community. opportunity, and is very well received by our community, and we thank you for your efforts, and we're looking forward to her again.
Thank you for supporting what I'm doing, so looking forward to it. I just hope the weather will work.
Alright, any other board comments this evening? Alright, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.